Hello.
Good evening, Karen. Welcome. We're about four minutes from kickoff, but glad you're with us.
Thank you. I'm using Gary's computer. I just wanted everybody to know I was here on to his computer.
As long as he approves, I guess it's okay.
We're not going to tell him about it. Oh, my goodness.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is the appointed hour of eight o'clock, and thank you all for being here. Welcome to the February 4th edition of the Lexington City Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and wish everyone a very happy Groundhog's Day. I hope that you celebrate in grand fashion. And first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all will stand and join me, please. I pledge allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic. An indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Under consideration of the agenda, there's been a request to delete 9.2, which is the tree board under consent agenda, and a request to add a number seven under reports of boards and commissions, a recycling report. And unless there's any objection to those changes, we can adopt the agenda as presented.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one other thing under new business? Consideration of a letter of support for the continuation of a George Marshall Museum collection in Lexington.
Very good. That's not been distributed, just the concept that you're looking to address. Very good.
Yes.
Thank you. So we have those three items for your consideration, one deletion and two additions to the agenda. Is there any objection to those? Hearing none, we'll adopt the agenda with those modifications. And I would, under presentations, there's nothing listed, but I would take a point of personal privilege and invite Eric Wilson to present a minute in history as we work to uplift our past to build for our future. Eric, take it away. Eric, you may be muted. Or you are, you're showing muted.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Excellent.
Okay, sorry for the glitch. I appreciate your time. Thank you. Several of you, many of you were at a program last night that several community groups sponsored. This is a very short version of that, but speaks to the important schools in our community. It speaks to Black History Month and every month. And I just want to track a couple movements through which both citizens and civic bodies and parents and faculty have helped improve the health of our community. You'll see here 1877 map, if you can follow my cursor down here in the bottom right, what started as a Freedman School right after the Civil War, the Methodist Church, Presbyterian Church, Oak Grove Cemetery, then Lexington Presbyterian Cemetery would have been down there. This is what that building looked like in 1920. After some expansion, it grew to, we think, over 200 students, clearly needed more. You can see Randolph Street United Methodist Church here at the left. It was funded by citizens privately funded to cover the investments. The city had governance, but it took black community trustees to build this to the health they've achieved. Oops. And among that were two native sons. There were daughters as well who taught here. But on the left, William Washington Jr., born to relative privilege to William Washington Senior, who served as a trustee on the school, was principal. On the right, Charles Harper, born in 1880, son to a single mother who went off to earn four degrees, two of them at Lincoln, one of them at Howard, and leaders in a school that sent a generation and more generations to higher education, Oberlin, Hampton, Lincoln, Stora College, many places. Henrietta Evans and Nanny Clay also on that faculty noted as veteran teachers. This is taught by both men and women. Here we see Downing, built in 1927, the same year that the new Lexington High School is built, a critical step in educational foundations. But his parents would show not enough. There were still no high school diplomas offered at this time. It took parents, four of them noted here, well-known in this community, to advocate and to offer to pay the salaries of a faculty that would advance high school education. Here in the midst of the Great Depression, parents saying, we will send our children elsewhere to be educated. We would rather not. We can educate more here if you allow us to pay that salary, but we need your permission to do that. This is a permit appeal, not a funding appeal. What happens from that school you see here? This is the Downing Library. You can go to that room today and see Lurbur and Downing up there, but you see Mr. Broadno, and I think I counted about 18 faculty here who are serving the children of this community in 1960. The class of 1961, there are some known faces, many known faces in this group. You can still stand on those steps. And we're enjoying the opportunity through the resources of Downing and others to crowdsource and find out more into archive and share with current Downing students and high school students, community members, what this school has meant. Here, the next to last slide, the plan. This is something, I will say, council member Alexander brought this first to my attention, that integration did not happen in one shot, that there were different trial methods, not uncommon in Virginia. Three students placed in Ann Smith, one student transferring from Downing to Central, two from Downing to the high school, right? And none reversing, right? No white students placed in Downing. So an earnest step, halting step, the final graduating class here, and the faculty in the back, if you look at the faculty in the back, all of whom had to find new jobs, most of whom could not find jobs here. You know, this is the challenge of desegregation, many opportunities, many rewards, but, you know, 55, 56 years on, how we think about who shapes the next steps of education is the role of our community, is the role of our school board and city government. Certainly, your leadership is valued in moving that ahead, and we just wanted to give historical perspective to that.
Thank you, Eric. It's always good to help with your direction of where you're heading, when you know where you've been. And at least, I know we have a couple that students, children that have gone to Lurbur and Downing, and some of us have attended Lurbur and Downing, and greatly appreciate your sharing those details with us as we learn more about our community and how we can be stronger and strive to be a more perfect union. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. Have a public hearing to consider changing the city council meeting time. Jim, did you want to comment at all?
No, sir. No, sir, Mr. Mayor. I think all the council is familiar with this matter.
Absolutely. The objective or the consideration is a change in by ordinance, which requires a public hearing and to change our meeting time is the process to accomplish that. And I would like to, this time, open the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak on this subject. Janie, I'll confirm, since we last spoke, no one has written in or contacted wanting to speak to this issue.
Not for this issue, no.
Thank you, ma'am. I will close the public hearing and ask council for their consideration.
I move to move the regular council meeting time to 7:00 PM effective February 18, 2021.
In essence, approving the ordinance as presented.
Yes, thank you.
I will second.
I have a second by Dennis. Any discussion? And I'm going to call on the city attorney and make sure we have the motion proper or adopting the proposed ordinance.
Yeah, I think you're fine on that.
Thank you, sir. Hearing, no questions or comments from council? Or Chuck, go right ahead.
Since we have the city attorney with us, I'm curious what the definition of council chamber is.
It's an excellent question. It's basically the regular meeting place, and that's put in the notice and the advertisement of the regular meeting place. So that's changed over the years, but that language has remained the same. And then, of course, in our current circumstance, the emergency ordinance essentially trumps the meeting place. So I don't believe it's specifically defined anywhere, but on the notices of the meetings, when we're at the elementary school, it always lists the elementary school as the location.
So the location would, the chamber, council chamber is defined by the location in the notice.
Exactly.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing not a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Sure.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Gallygood. Gallygood, I believe you're muted. Or?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ziegler? And Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Next item is consideration of the minutes from the January 21 city council regular meeting. You receive those in your packet. Are there any concerns, clarifications, or questions? Hearing none, unless there's an objection, we'll approve those as presented. Next item is citizens' remarks and comments. We did have one write-in, and I would ask Dennis Ayers to read that into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a letter from Carolyn Manspile to Mayor Freedman and Lexington City Council members. I am writing to express my opinion on changing the names of streets and selling the property on Spotswood Drive. I would vote no on both of these issues. The Piovano Building is used as a wonderful outreach for Rara and Community Table, and I do not see why, if the land is so needed by the developers, that the adjoining lot could not be considered and the building be left. Changing the street names would cause a true confusion with much as far as maps and 911, etc. After the events of July 2020, I realized that I had taken all the perks of living in Lexington for granted, as I listened to the Zoom meeting on how you all handled the changing the name of the cemetery. That meeting was advertised in the news gazette as being one that would appoint a commission, both pro and con, on the issue, but somehow there were many who had been notified by whatever means. I do not know to send in their votes recommending that it be done that night. Why aren't the issues that impact all citizens not mandated and put to vote? A lot of seniors do not have computers and access to Zoom meetings. I appreciate all that is done for the benefit of this beautiful area, and I know that there are not many thanks. I thank you, and as we enter a new unknown future, just do not erase all our history. Carolyn Manspile, Walker Street, Lexington, Virginia.
Thank you, Dennis. And Janie, were there any other comments or?
I didn't have any other than Ms. Manspile's.
Terrific. Thank you. Want to make sure no one else joined us. We do welcome citizens' remarks, time for that at all of our meetings, and do invite the public to share their thoughts, concerns, observations, and encouragement as we go about the business of the city. And next item on the agenda is consent agenda. And you see the item before you again, the tree board bylaws was deleted, and we are simply considering the request for the trail run on Brushy Hill.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Thank you, Chuck.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Being the consent agenda, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Smith? Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Strong?
Aye.
Gallygood?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Next item is reports and communications. First, the Blue Ridge Resource Authority.
No report, but we'll meet on Monday at 7:00.
Very good. I know that's available by Zoom, and I can't recall, is there in-person meeting as well?
I believe so.
Thank you, sir. Come one, come all, and talk trash. Main Street Lexington, Ms. Strong.
This is typically the slow time downtown, but Main Street has a couple of events going on or coming up soon. Restaurant Week will be February 22 through March, Sunday, March 7. And this year, you can either dine in or take or take food to go and fill out a ballot and submit that for a raffle, and they're raffling off different prizes such as gift certificates to restaurants. And then in March, they're trying, we're trying a new promotional. It's St. Patrick's Day promotional theme, and there will be shamrocks in the participating stores. And there will be shamrocks in the participating stores. And once you locate the shamrock, you get a, your card marked. And once you fill your card, you can, you can submit that for drawing for a raffle as well. It's similar to our winter time Love Lex Lotto, but with a St. Patrick's theme. And I'd like to welcome Shenandoah Hemp Supply to our downtown and wish a happy 16th anniversary to Celtic Tides. They've been downtown for 16 years now. And that's all I have.
Terrific. Any questions for Ms. Strong? Thank you, Leslie. Exciting to learn that and celebrate John Mormon and his wonderful shop. Been a couple of different locations, but going strong, I hope. Planning, Ms. Strong.
We met last Thursday. We did have a comment from citizen Russ Orson. He is requesting ordinance changes for multifamily housing. And we looked at whether we should do it through the zoning amendments we're doing now, or if he should submit that separately so that can be considered faster. And that's going to be the recommendation that Arnie was going to work out with Mr. Orson for him to to bring that before planning. So we should see that soon when he submits that application. And we continued our work on the annual zoning ordinance amendments. And we're also submitting the Lexington Comprehensive Plan 2040 for the American Planning Association Award. So wish us luck on that. I think it's a plan worthy of acknowledgement. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Strong. Certainly it is an award winning comp plan, wonderful job by Planning Commission. Any questions regarding planning? Okay, Regional Tourism Board.
The Tourism Board won't meet again until February 17th. No report tonight.
Only noteworthy that some of the crew and cast have been seen around town of the filming in Clifton Forge of the Hulu mini series, which is very exciting.
Yes, it is.
Rockford Area Recreation Organization.
Our Board of Directors met last night. We, we've had a pretty good basketball season. Our numbers were down, but we were able to accomplish some activity for the kids, the boys and girls that participated. Now we're turning toward kind of early spring where we might be able to do our, hoping to be able to do some of our fall sports in a very safe way. And so that would include signups for football. And one of the things that we're, you know, continuing to evaluate, of course, is safety. And you might recall that some of our football teams play over in the Allegheny Youth Football League. And Allegheny County is one of the few counties, one of the few areas in the Commonwealth where they have not even begun playing high school sports. And so we're unsure how that will go, but our goal is to take signups. We are not charging a registration fee during this year, but our goal is to take signups. And then we're going to pivot in the direction that the the virus takes us. And we want to offer an opportunity to our kids to do something football related or athletics related. And that's our goal as we move into our our fall sports in early spring. And then, of course, our spring sports like baseball and softball and so on. And then another item that we worked on is we're budget season and a lot of kudos go to Jake for his help with with the RARO budget. And then we're also finalizing the job description as we will soon be hitting the market advertising for our executive director position. That Darryl Plager has been filling very well as the interim director for for a few months.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Any, any questions? On the RARO report. Very, very appreciative of the board directors and the staff in challenging times and creative ways to reach out to the children and keep them moving and. Prospering through this pandemic. Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
Threshold has not met, but we plan to meet again June 15th. No report.
Thank you, ma'am. And recycling, Mr. Smith.
All right, here we go. After our council meeting a couple of weeks ago, the recycling committee. Met virtually and I brought them up to speed on the, I guess, on likelihood that the city would be able to fiscally absorb the. Proposal from RDS and haul our recyclables, that is cardboard. Plastics, one and two, metals. Two and and paper to to run out, just wasn't. It was going to cost too much and naturally they were disappointed as a result of that outcome. But a question arose from one of the committee members, well, what about just sending cardboard and metals down the road? Since those are the only materials that are worth anything. Jeff reached out, Jeff Martin reached out to RDS with that idea. RDS came back with a, well, we probably wouldn't be able to compete with CNS. So that prompted a review of some. Numbers that had been going around from CNS disposal over an attribute station with Public Works requested. Another informal proposal from from CNS to handle our cardboard and metals. And the numbers look pretty good. I sat down with Jeff and Jim. On Tuesday afternoon to discuss some of the details. There's a lot of numbers flying on, flying around, so so bear with me. The tonnages for cardboard estimated. For recycling would be about 45 tons a year. Bulk metals are already. Not going into the landfill and being disposed of appropriately. But there's an estimate of six tons per year of consumer metals that would make it into the stream. The process would be having two smaller containers by the old SPCA building, which was the proposed site for the RDS container. For consumers to drop cardboard and metals. Once those fill up, they go into larger containers inside the the Public Works yard. And once those containers fill up, they'd be hauled off by CNS. To to their consumer that that buys these materials. The cardboard. The volume is estimated at 45 tons per year. There'd be 25, I'm sorry, 23 trips per year of cardboard. At a rate of $125 per hall, which comes to a total of $2,875. We get a rebate on the sale of that material. At the current rate is about 20 bucks a ton and that's on the low side. For a rebate of $900. Metals. Would be approximately 12 trips a year at 100 bucks a hall. Or a total hauling cost of $1,200, but the rebate on that's quite a bit more attractive. Last was 150 a ton. But that might be on the high side. It averages close to between 80 and 90. But that'd be a rebate of $5,400. And if you add all those up, we're actually be running in the black for over $2,000. The materials or the containers involved, we'd be renting one large container. For the cardboard for 100 bucks a month, we could buy it outright for $9,000, but the rental is a much more attractive. Option at this time, site prep of about $4,500, which would be some fencing. And. And some ground prep and two small containers for the metals. And cardboard outside the Public Works yard for a total of $800. So, you know, roughly 5,000 outlay. For for prep and 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 containers. That doesn't include the $9,000 purchase for a cardboard hauling container. But that'd be 1,200 a year. For renting that hauling container. Also consider that we would be diverting. The cardboard and the metals from consumers to the tune of about 50 tons a year, not into the landfill for a. You know, saving a landfill solid waste savings of $3,000 a year. So all in all, it's, it's, it's pretty close to a wash. Fiscally, if we divert cardboard and metals in this fashion, plastic. And and paper would still be going to the landfill, but I think it's a very attractive compromise to to do the right thing without without busting the budget. I think that checks all the boxes. Any questions?
Chuck, thanks for, to you and the committee. Has, you know, I know a lot of Lexington residents have started to get in the habit of going to auto recyclers just five, six miles away. And getting compensated for their metals and and so on, because they accept cardboard and metals and. Just, just throwing it out there, if that was at all in the equation, one of the considerations, since a lot of Lexington folks are now doing that, just driving five miles.
It was not discussed in the meeting. But, you know, we have been trying to get the consumers that didn't want a place to take their materials and and auto recyclers over in Bena Vista was. About the only outlet for metals and cardboard. Now they can. I don't know what their compensation is for the for the materials they bring over there, but now they can. Travel a mile instead of six.
I have, I have a comment. Is is it just any kind of cardboard or is it a special type of cardboard that we're talking about recycling?
Jeff could probably. Back me up or confirm my suspicion that, you know, cardboard OCC, old cardboard container is the traditional. You know, brown shipping boxes you see around, not, not, not clay coated, not. Not plastic coated, just plain old packaging cardboard, like. You would suspect. But I'll get confirmation on that, but I'm.
Sometimes that's called corrugated cardboard.
Yeah, old corrugated container. Yeah.
Thank you.
Chuck, just to affirm the. Anticipated process would be a convenience center at Public Works Yard. Businesses and individuals would deliver whatever is recyclable, whatever is taken. At this point, it's projected to be cardboard and metals such as aluminum cans and and other can goods, I guess. I can't, or cans to the site at Public Works and then distributed from there. But from a user standpoint, people would make use of that convenience center.
That's correct. Another part of the implementation is to start running cardboard collection. Or re- renew cardboard collection downtown in the CBD to get cardboard materials that. At currently are are disposed of in the landfill, so that would. That would go into effect as well, probably twice a week pickup.
Chuck, was any discussion had about if there's an inconvenience to the neighborhood? That would be absorbing a lot of extra traffic up by Public Works?
Not at length, but when you consider the amount of Public Works trucks that are in and out of there and. You know, the number of households that that will be, you know, you're dealing with cars going up instead of instead of Public Works trucks. We, I think had consensus that. It wouldn't be an inconvenience for them, for the neighborhood.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Jim, did I, did I leave anything out on that?
No, I think you got it all, sir. Thank you.
Chuck, thank you to to you and the committee. Saw Scott Ditman today and he was very complimentary of the process and the meetings that you've held. So grateful to level with our community and work for solutions that make sense for for all our citizens and stepping in the right direction for recycling.
Yeah, I think, I think they'll be pretty happy to hear the the options that are much more attractive now. And especially want to thank Jeff and his crew for going the extra mile and and really doing the deep dive to to see if that is a viable. Possibility to somehow get some recycling in into the stream and and out of the landfill stream. So when you see Jeff, give him a good pat on the back and Scott.
Absolutely. And appreciation to CNS, local business who is doing, doing good things in our community every day. So thank you very much. Any other questions for Chuck? Very good. Next item is my report. I've got a few items for you this evening. This past Monday, the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission held its every two month meeting. We are still meeting virtual and miss seeing one another in Stanton in person. But two items of note in particular from the meeting. Number one, the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission and the Central Shenandoah Health District are the same footprint. And Dr. Laura Corningay was in attendance and spoke a little bit about the current circumstances relative to vaccinations. And assured everyone that the registration that they've done through their church or through the health center or whatever surveys locally. Are being utilized. The big problem that they're having is simply just not enough vaccinations. And she gave some numbers, one of which there, I think, over 300,000 people in the the district. And they received 3,400 doses in the first round, so not able to get that many people, but they're working diligently to. Get more, but most importantly, they have the infrastructure partnering with different organizations, at least in the Lexington and Rockfish County area. The Health Center and Corollian Hospital. They have very well organized infrastructure to get people and get the shots in the arms. By the professionals and track that as it should be. So excited for that ramping up. And because I'm sure all of you like me have heard from many citizens who are really eager to get the vaccination. And just concerned that they're registering in a black hole and no one's got their name. But Dr. Corningay said, rest assured, they have the names. They're going through the criteria and trying to get the. Through the governor's directives, the people that are, that should be shot first, so to speak. The other item of note was an EDA cares update. There was a approximately $400,000 grant from the federal government for economic development planning post pandemic. And the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission is working for all of our region to come up with the economic development plan. For all of us that's required by the feds and will be forthcoming information and suggestions. And how best to build out of this pandemic. On an unrelated note, I just want to remind everybody that the city manager is still seeking any edits or suggestions relative to the street renaming policy. Also want to remind everyone that our retreat is planned for February 25th, noon to 5:00. And currently we anticipate St. Patrick's will be hosting us and lunch will be provided. You may have noticed recently or since the first year, we don't have updates on the Department of Social Services. Michelle Hens was, is our representative on that and no longer on council. But she wanted to give a public thank you. She continues to serve our community in that role on the Department of Social Services board. As they go about their regular business and also discerning where their new office space will be. Lot of work involved there, but thankful that Michelle continue on, continues on with that work. I wanted to give a thank you to VMI. They hosted the Red Cross with a blood drive earlier this week. Actually, on Tuesday, it was in Cock Hall. Um, actually on Tuesday, it was in Cock Hall. Um, I hadn't been in Cock Hall for a number of years. You can't get in now, uh, unless you have a, a swipe to get in. Um, but it was just as cold as I remember in the dead of winter. Uh, the windows were open and the heat was clanking. It was, uh, pretty chilly. So the blood was flowing slowly, but I do encourage people with all the blood drives we have going on to, um, do give the gift of life and, and donate blood. Um, and, uh, second to last, um, the, uh, for those, if you're not aware, earlier this week, there was a foreclosure on the, um, Randolph Street home that burnt, uh, several years ago and avoid demolition. And, um, local, uh, family, um, Connie Clark and her daughter, uh, Shy Clark have bought that with intentions of, uh, restoring it. There's their brand new owners, but they're local owners and they're, um, have a good track record of, uh, rehabilitating different properties in Lexington. So I'm really excited, um, and hopeful that that home will get, uh, the much needed attention from, uh, the fire and facing the elements the past several years. But again, their, their plans are not definitive, but, uh, look forward to, um, to their, their work on that. Uh, going back to the, um, COVID, uh, component, Dr. Corningay, I neglected to, um, add one detail. Relative, uh, everyone's been, um, going online and, uh, doing surveys that way. Uh, if you're not internet savvy or don't have internet access, um, you can reach the, uh, Central Shenandoah, um, Health District at five four zero three three two seven eight three zero and register, if you will, with, um, many would consider it old fashioned, but, uh, by the telephone. Um, they don't have a large staff, but they do have folks there, um, and, uh, ready, willing, able to support with that. Um, lastly, as you, um, all, uh, may, may see if you're zooming in, um, unfamiliar face. I want to welcome, uh, Crawford Humphrey, uh, originally from Charlottesville, Virginia, for the third year junior at Washington Lee University, who is, uh, doing duty on the Rockbridge Report. So Crawford, welcome. We're glad you're here and look forward to your contributions and your interviews. Um, council and staff are available. So if you want to talk trash or learn more about recycling, uh, Chuck in particular is ready, willing and able. And, uh, that concludes, uh, my report and I'll bounce pass to the, uh, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to announce tonight that the, uh, city only has one active, uh, COVID case in our staff, and that's in the fire department. Today, all the rest of our staff is COVID free. Uh, last week we received a complaint, citizen complaint regarding a house at three fourteen Peyton Street that was leaning significantly in the direction of a neighboring house. This house has been vacant for years. It also has interhares in its, on its taxes for a number of years. The owner of the property is long deceased and we do not know who the heirs are. City staff and the city attorney have reviewed our options in this matter. Legally, we're obligated to protect public safety. We must take action to ascertain if the house is a danger and if so, we must mitigate this risk. We're, but we are obligated to this course with or without being able to recapture expenses for these activities. The city building inspector and fire marshal with legal oversight from our attorney are moving forward to bring this to resolution. Spotswood proposal, just an update after the last council meeting. The proposal for the development of property was viewed and discussed yesterday in a virtual public meeting. And I must add that council member Seagull did an excellent job representing the city as some questions were directed to him and he gave a real good, uh, overview of why this was the least important for consideration, uh, at this time. Uh, two more public sessions will be held this week, excuse me, next week, Wednesday at six PM and Thursday at eight PM. And if somebody lit wishes to participate, uh, you can see that Janie is now putting that up on the screen. So you can get on our city webpage and on our homepage and, uh, uh, participate on the Zoom addresses for each of those meetings. Also a bit of an update is that the developer has been working with city staff to consider potential rezoning of that property. Uh, these are discussions only, but it may be that the property, if we were to consider it for development, would be better developed under the residential multifamily zone or the planned use development zone. And if either of those actions were to occur, city staff will review those, um, proposals or, uh, requests, just as we always do. The planning commission, of course, also will review and rec, make a recommendation on any proposed resuming, rezoning. And then that request would of course go before city council. A public hearing would be held and council may consider then, uh, action. So this is a public, um, process and there are no shortcuts. We'll go through the same procedure that we always go through. Most of you know that in the winter, this time of year, the ground freezes and the ground thaws and unfortunately our water mains break throughout the city. And we've had a number of water, uh, water main breaks this week. And I must say that our city staff does an excellent job working in those cold, wet conditions down in the mud for hours at a time to make repairs to those water mains. And, uh, even though it's a slight inconvenience to many of our residents, I wanted to say my hats off to those folks because they exemplify the commitment to service that makes our community a quite a special place. Um, back on the topic of COVID, last week, the city school staff received their first round of COVID vaccinations. And I was told by a city school superintendent Rebecca Walters that about eighty nine percent of the staff did receive the vaccinations in that first round. I also want to note and give credit to my counterpart in Rockbridge County Spencer Sutter. Um, he took the time to look up the statistics on every county and city in our Central Shenandoah Health District because sometimes we hear that the larger communities, Harrisonburg and Rockingham County in particular, get more uh, than they're fair sure of the vaccines. So Spencer looked up the data and Rockingham County has about eighty two thousand residents and they've had about eighty five thousand, uh, vaccines to date. Rockbridge County has twenty two thousand residents and they've received about twenty five hundred vaccines to date. So typically in our region, we're looking at about ten percent of the population or counties and cities have had their residents vaccinated. So it's really an equal distribution in our health district and that might help some people in our area to be a little more at peace. We're not being shorted on those vaccinations. And as the mayor said, unfortunately, there just are not enough of them. I want to mention, uh, some activities in the fire department and, you know, they do a lot beyond fighting fires and responding to ambulances. And in January, the department provided eighty one, uh, activities that help with our risk reduction in the community. And these services included building plan reviews, emergency management meetings, uh, construction permit evaluations, business expect inspections and co complaints. Uh, so in every instance, department is focused on reducing risk in our communities and also protecting, uh, uh, or enhancing the department's ability to respond to requests for emergencies by reviewing plans and activities to make sure that those plans, uh, allow for a quick response of our fire and EMS services. Something this afternoon that came up, which is a little more unfortunate, Chief Dickerson came into my office and noted that our departmental air compressor, which is nearly thirty years old, expired. And this essential piece of equipment is what we use to fill the, uh, air tanks for our firefighters when they go into, um, fight internal fires inside of a building or also when they're responding to a, a call in a hazardous situation where they perhaps have fumes and bad air and, and that type of thing. Uh, this piece of equipment, uh, the chief will be bringing before you next council meeting for an emergency purchase because without it, we cannot have our firefighters in those dangerous situations. Uh, this is about, uh, fifty five thousand dollar expense and we are likely to recommend that we take the FY twenty carryover funds that are in the current budget that are unallocated and, uh, use those funds for this expenditure as an emergency expenditure. Also want to, uh, comment on some activities in the police department. Detective Smith and Kesterson recently completed their negotiations training course. And this course provides strategies that can be used to deescalate hostages in similar situations where an innocent party is at risk or in harm's way. I also want to comment on the chief of police search. Our acting consultants, the Virginia Chief of Police Association is nearing the end of the initial phone interviews of active candidates. Uh, fourteen candidates are under current, are currently under consideration uh, for this position and phone interviews to be finished this week and, uh, report what the candidates will be then forthcoming. Aside from dealing with water breaks in the public works, we've also had a pump down in, uh, pump number two in the Campbell Lane pump station is down. Uh, it shorted out. There's no indication of what caused this failure. The pump station is still functional with the one pump that's in service. And if we will investigate the cause of this, uh, of this matter. If the pump is beyond repair, of course, we'll file an insurance claim and a replacement pump is about thirty thousand dollars. So a couple of unexpected expenses as we do from time to time. Um, I believe Janie will now put some information on the screen. Yesterday I was, uh, able to attend a webinar sponsored by Virginia First Cities, uh, that dealt with the activities that are occurring in the general assembly, the state economy and revenues and the effects of COVID on our Commonwealth. And the first page you'll see in front of you has to do with our uh, sales tax and the, uh, impact of COVID nineteen on our sales taxes and the, uh, change in our economy. You'll note on the right hand set of bars that in the month of October, sales taxes through brick and mortar stores in the Commonwealth actually increased by one point two percent. On the other hand, uh, virtual sales, online sales increased by twenty two point eight percent. And overall sales taxes went up by six point four percent. Sales taxes in the Commonwealth are still a very healthy rate and that's a very positive thing for all of us. Year to date, you can see that the brick and mortar stores sales have actually declined by two percent. And online sales have increased by a whopping forty four percent. And year to date, our sales taxes in the Commonwealth are actually up eight point two percent. So again, it's a healthy increase in sales taxes, but it does call to mind or to our attention, the fact that sales are changing in the Commonwealth and across the nation. The way, uh, we shop, as we all know, is changing. Uh, Janie, can you bring up that second, uh, page? I think the important things to note on this page is that if you go into that second, uh, bullet point, it says online sales, uh, are recorded with the sales initiate and this generally helps rural localities. And the reason for that is many of us in our local areas, if we want something a little unique, are going to Roanoke, Charlottesville, even Richmond to shop. Now we're going to get online and shop from home and purchase those goods. So we'll get credit for those sales at home because they're online and we collect those taxes here in Lexington. Now unfortunately, for Richmond or Lynchburg or Roanoke or Stanton, they don't get those sales anymore. So you'll also note that, you know, this could, um, this could cause a change in how commercial and, um, uh, retail facilities and developments occur. There may not be as many of them anymore, brick and mortar, uh, developments for retail. And certainly some of our larger communities may suffer because some of those, um, just underutilized, if you will, stores or outlets will no longer be able to compete. So, um, a mixed bag, of course, depending which community you are in, but it's probably a positive things for us. Um, Janie, why don't we go to that next, uh, page, please? And probably one of the negatives that probably will occur due to COVID is that if you look here at revenue growth, uh, the last time we had a downturn in the economy, two thousand and nine, if you go over to the second column from the right, it shows what the revenues were for cities. And it took cities four years from two thousand and nine to two thousand and thirteen before we exceeded our revenues uh, that had been in place at two thousand and nine. So what our first cities were saying in the consultant, uh, Jim Regenball, who was an excellent economic forecaster are saying is that many of our cities are going to lag for a number of years and returning to revenues that were present before the onset of COVID. We don't know that. That's not a certainty for us here in Lexington, but that's been the experience for cities. And I think we all have to be conservative and very carefully consider our revenue situation over the long haul. So, um, I just wanted to share that with you. Uh, there is a full report which I will provide to you on a very, uh, very detailed and, uh, very helpful report. Again, that comes from Virginia First Cities. Um, and I know council member Seagull was asking about sales taxes earlier today. And so it's just, uh, perchance that we have this information to share with you today. And, and that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Members of council, have any questions for the city manager on any of the items on his report?
Um, Jim, can you go over those Harrisonburg, uh, population and, and vaccination numbers again? I think it, I don't know. I don't know if I misheard you or, or.
Well, I went over the rocking, uh, excuse me, Rockingham County population and they have eighty two thousand people in Rockingham County. I don't have the numbers for Harrisonburg right in front of me, but I believe it's somewhere around fifty thousand and they had a little over five thousand vaccines.
Okay, I meant Rockingham. I, I thought I heard eighty two thousand population, eighty five thousand vaccines, which kind of, I just want to make sure we have the right numbers, uh, for the minutes.
Eighty five hundred vaccines.
Thank you.
Any other questions to the city manager? Great, Jim. Thank you. Appreciate your, uh, uh, report and, uh, and thorough details. Uh, next item under city manager is a resolution twenty twenty one dash zero two, setting the personal property tax relief percentage for twenty twenty one at sixty percent. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I believe our commissioner of revenue and treasurer are, uh, very adept at handling this and I'll just turn that over to them.
Terrific.
Good evening. Um, I come every year for this. Um, just a brief background information because I think we have new, one new council member. The, uh, personal property tax relief started in nineteen ninety eight. At that time it was twelve and a half percent and ninety nine, it went to twenty seven point five percent. In two thousand forty seven point five percent. From two thousand and one to two thousand and five, it was seventy percent. Then in two thousand and four, a special se- session of the general assembly decided that they were going to halt the amount of money that each locality would get. And whatever amount they would pay in two thousand and five would be the amount they would have from then on. The city of Lexington's amount is five hundred eighty one thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and forty nine cents. And it will be that way until they end it, if they ever end it or not. And the treasurer and I look at the vehicles that are there. We do the assessments. And then we come up with the amount that'll fit in for us to be able to use for the personal property tax for relief. In two thousand and six, we felt that if we use sixty percent, we would be able to keep this relief amount the same for consistent, for consistency for, you know, a long period of time. And at this rate right now, we'll still be able to have sixty percent for the next four years. And, um, the other localities, they have worked at different ways. And Rockbridge County's last year, their percentage rate was thirty seven percent and Buena Vista, theirs was forty five percent. And, um, so I'm asking you to approve it. If, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
Thank you, Karen. Members of council, have any questions regarding Karen's presentation or the?
Karen, uh, quick question, uh, or maybe not a quick question, but so four years, that's, um, the first time I've heard kind of a estimate on when the sixty percent could not be feasible anymore. If, if that projection holds true and, and the legislator doesn't do anything, um, do you see us changing our personal property, you know, um, relief rate drastically or increment, you know, much smaller, like down to fifty five percent, but not down to thirty percent immediately. Like how, how, I, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but any advice, any guidance?
Right. No, I, I don't think it's going to be like the thirty percent or probably not even to fifty percent, but, um, I, I did numbers and since two thousand and fifteen, it's gone a little higher each year. Like in two thousand and fifteen, the personal property rate that we actually gave out totaled five hundred and eighty eight thousand, and I just mentioned five hundred and eighty one. Well, last year in twenty twenty, it was six hundred and thirty thousand. Okay. Now you have to realize that back in two thousand and six, it, we had a surplus of like eighty five thousand. Okay. So that's why we still have a surplus of money for that, which only can be used for the personal property tax relief. I just discussed that with you guys earlier, but, um, and it could be that people will quit buying new cars, you know, and, and maybe it won't be four years, maybe it'll be seven. Be four years, maybe it'll be seven years, you know, um, but I just like to put it out with, when it's within a five-year span that it may change. I just kind of want to bring that up to you.
Thank you, Karen. I always appreciate it when you come and give us. The explanation and and I never miss a chance to ask you a question or something like that, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. You're welcome.
Any other questions for Karen? I'm hearing none again. Karen, thank you for being with us and thank you for your, your work as Commissioner of Revenue in the city. Um, you do a terrific job and uh, we're grateful for um, your keeping everything in check. You've heard the recommendation of the city manager and Commissioner of Revenue and Treasurer recommending approval of this resolution. I'd ask for your consideration.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash O two, which sets the personal property tax relief percentage for twenty twenty-one. At sixty percent.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander, with the second and any discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Ayers?
Hi.
Mr. Alligood?
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler?
Hi.
Ms. Strong?
Hi.
Ms. Alexander?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much and we can uh, thank. The opportunity. Uh, next item is the city attorney's report. Mr. Jenkins?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, uh, Mayor Friedman. Uh, just two brief uh, updates. The first on the Water Tower case, um, we have submitted a joint endorsed order. Uh, myself and Ben Thurman, who's representing the unknown Ayers, essentially the counterparty in the suit. Um, we've submitted that to Judge Russell and as far as I know, that's on his desk. Um, what is uh, what Ben and I believe is an order that reflects. Um, Judge Russell's intent and the hearing that we had back in the fall. Um, and hopefully we'll get a, a signed order that will allow all of us to move forward. In the not-too-distant future. Um, and if we don't get it, I'm not sure what our next step will be. Um, potentially pushing forwards um, in some way. Um, but at that point, it may become a discussion with counsel. Um, as to the, the best way to move forward, but um, that's sort of the, the plan B. The plan A is um, we think we've given the judge what he was looking for and hopefully we'll hear back from him soon. Um, secondly, uh, David had asked for an update on the um, sort of nationwide opioid litigations. And how um, that's going to affect the city, um, which actually a timely request in a couple of ways. Um, you might have seen that McKinsey Consulting Group has agreed to a substantial penalty for their role. And the um, opioid academic app, uh, opioid epidemic. Um, it's notable that McKinsey wasn't sued by anyone. There was basically just the threats of a lawsuit. Um, was enough for them to come to the table and put some money in the pot. There are essentially two other large chunks of potential funds. Um, from the uh, suppliers of the opioids themselves, as well as the. I should say the manufacturers of the opioid thems- themselves, um, as well as the distributors. And those are taking two separate tracks, really, the. The manufacturers, the main manufacturers have all declared bankruptcy. Um, so their contribution to any pot is um, tangled up in the overall bankruptcy process. Um, which can take a while to sort out, but everyone, you know, that's involved says that progress is being made. And potentially there will be some settlement of the um, sort of the settlement issue outside or um, in addition to the bankruptcy. That would sort of short circuit a little bit of the bankruptcy process. Then the distributors, uh, there is a trial coming up in mid-May, I believe, in West Virginia. Um, that's going to be one of the sort of uh, load star type trials is determining just where. Um, folks think the distributor's liability is. Um, and I believe the perception is that the distributors um, are going to come down, come up with a final number. For just a global settlement ahead of that trial, so um, there's potentially um, sort of more significant news on the horizon. Um, you know, just strategically, they may want to, to get out in front of any sort of um, negative verdict from their perspective. So that's sort of the, where things stand with the potential uh, funds. Um, sort of being contributed to the, the ultimate relief. Um, secondarily, and um, in a lot of ways, significantly and importantly, the. Uh, General Assembly is working through a bill that actually determines how the funds that are received as part of these settlements. Will be divvied up um, throughout the state. Um, so it's a significant um, path forward. And I think a clear indication of everyone thinking that these settlements are going to happen sooner rather than later. Um, that the General Assembly is taking this up now. And what's currently the proposal before the General Assembly has been tweaked in a number of ways. Um, but from my understanding, pretty much every sort of iteration. Um, has essentially improved the standing of the municipalities and localities across the state in terms of. Um, their ability to uh, receive a decent chunk of the, the funds directly. So as it stands now, um, whatever Virginia gets, and of course, all of that's going to be, you're going to have these settlements. Are going to be um, all fifty states, so the, the big number you see in the headlines. Um, will get cut certainly um, amongst the fifty states. And then of Virginia's share, that will be allocated. Um, the state will take fifteen percent. There's going to be an opioid abatement authority, which is going to take fifty-five percent of the recoveries. Um, leaving thirty percent of the recoveries are going to be allocated to the um, localities. That are participating in these suits, Lexington, of course, being one of those. Um, so of those thirty percent that's spread out across all the minute uh, localities. Um, fifteen percent, half of that, fifteen percent is um, specified for opioid abatement uses. And the other fifteen percent is totally unrestricted. Um, so there is going to be some unrestricted funds available to localities. Um, and then the opioid abatement authority, that's going to get the biggest chunk, uh, the fifty-five percent. It's going to be a statewide authority. Um, that's going to essentially can do this on a continual basis. Um, and I think the final numbers are being worked out, but I think as it stands now. Um, it's required that at least fifty percent of the funds available to the opioid abatement authority. Also have to go directly to the localities in some shape or form. Um, so um, getting just thirty percent off the top. And then half of the fifty-five percent that the opioid abatement authority is getting. Um, is um, leading to significant percentages coming back to the localities. Um, which I think uh, most folks are agreeing is a win uh, essentially for everyone, so. Um, like I say, significant sort of things moving, but we're still not at, at the point where. Um, anyone's coming up with any sort of estimate as to what the actual dollar amount that Lexington's going to get will be. Or when that will be received. Um, but I think it's um, important and a clear indication. That's things are moving because these frameworks are um, getting put in place. And sort of everyone's generally agreeing on, on how things are going to end up. Uh, so I'm thinking there will be a resolution of this issue sort of nationwide globally, I would imagine. Fairly soon, I would say, you know, summertime by the end of the year, um, seems to be where things are going. Um, so um, so generally speaking, from the opioid uh, litigation, all positive news. If not, um, sort of the final answer that we're all hoping to see. And that is my report.
Thank you very much, Jared. Any questions for the city attorney? On either issue? Excellent. Uh, next item on the agenda is new business and the first item is Main Street Lexington businesses request. Information was in your packet with a recommendation from the city manager. Uh, but I'd like to call on Rebecca Logan. Rebecca, thanks for joining us.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Manager. So happy to be with you tonight. Uh, Main Street continues to consider supporting our businesses, especially through the slow months. And the, the wind, slow winter months. Um, what we have in front of you that tonight for your consideration is a program. We're calling the Business Reimbursement Program. And basically, we're trying to um, support our businesses in a way where they can have the freedom. To promote their businesses in any way they feel works best for them. And then we would reimburse their expenses so that they do not go backwards because cash flow right now is not so great. So we're thinking, we've kind of come up with an arbitrary number of four hundred dollars that we would reimburse any particular business. Um, for expenses that would include newspaper and radio spots. As well as social media ads because they do cost some money. Um, we promotional expenses, if they want to have uh, prizes for a raffle. We would pay them for the wholesale value of that prize. And then also, um, if they have a promotion where they end up generating a bunch of online sales, we would cover their shipping costs. So again, it's and or, or a combination of the above. Over the course of the next few months, um, we can determine exactly when that ends. We arbitrarily chose the end of April, but that could happen, uh, we could end it sooner. Um, and this would basically um, cover their costs. They don't go backwards, as I've said. And it would um, allow them to have the freedom to promote their, them, their businesses. The way that works best for their customers, so it's either to encourage folks to come into the store. If that's what their customers are comfortable doing, or it's a robust online sale. Um, this online sale promotion, uh, for instance, we know of one business that's having a, just a sweet little. Promotion where they're going to do a little competition and then they have three tiers of prizes. And so we would reimburse that business for the money that they would give as prizes. It, you know, one of, it's thirty dollars for the top winner, fifteen and ten. So we would give that money back to this business so they're not actually going backwards. Um, again, we would use the same criteria that we have used for the Cares money. So this goes to all of the businesses licensed in the city of Lexington. We would reach out to these folks to let them know they're eligible for this program and then we just ask them to give us receipts. Over the course of, you know, whatever few months we agree to. And we would reimburse them probably bi-weekly so that we, you know, continue to help with their cash flow. But then there's a cap on any one business getting, um, you know, a certain amount of money. So it could happen over the course of a few weeks or all at once. Just depends on how they care to promote themselves. Okay, any questions?
Thanks, Rebecca. Members of the council, have any questions?
I have a question, um, Rebecca. Uh, when you talk about the reimbursement and what it includes. Um, do you know if there are restaurants who were not making deliveries before COVID? Who are now having to make deliveries? And if the expenses from making deliveries could be included in this?
Oh, that's a great idea. I do know that there were many restaurants that did, did not do deliveries. And they have transitioned to that. Uh, they've done really well at curbside pickup. Uh, a few of them, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how many continue to offer deliveries. But if that is something that they're interested in, we would absolutely consider those expenses. Okay, that's a great, great point. Sure.
Other questions of Rebecca?
I have a question.
Mr. Alligood, go right ahead.
All right, the, what is the sum of the cares money that's been distributed so far? To Lexington businesses?
Okay, I have to ta- uh, take that uh, our initiatives out of that. So it was on the first round, it was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And the second round was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So we're looking at, quick do the math, two, almost three, almost three hundred thousand dollars.
And then what's these um, for this particular request?
That is up to you. I know that there, that council has a, a bit of money in reserve. I don't think that we're going to need a bunch of money, but um, I know that I was here a couple of weeks ago. And we were asking for forty-two thousand. Uh, it, it's up to council to determine how much you're willing to. Fund this initiative. Um, and it's not, it's not a, a huge amount of money for any one business. But it does help them not go either dip into reserves or. Uh, it, I think what I would like to say, it improves their budget just for the next few months. So I would say that um. You know, I think I put in my proposal that there, I knew that there was up to sixty thousand dollars in this money that was set aside. It's up to you all to determine how much of that you would be willing to. Um, fund this initiative. And then again, uh, depending on, excuse me, the um, amount of, of engagement from our businesses. You know, this money would sit into a separate account that we established for the cares money. And if it doesn't get used up, it could be returned to the city. Or it could be, it could just stay in the account to um, fund and the next initiative. It's, that, you know, it's flexible, but it would not, we would, we would certainly take the receipts and do a report to the city. So that you all knew exactly where this money went and it's all accounted for in a separate standalone account, separate from our operating account.
Rebecca, I have a question. Um, eh, so, so the way you envision it. Participating businesses could, could submit up to four hundred dollars in eligible expenses. How many, like, potentially, how many eligible businesses are in Lexington? Like, I, I, I'm, you, roughly, what would that number be?
Well, we have over a hundred and five businesses in our commercial district alone. And then there's probably at least the people that we reached out to that participated in the cares distribution. There's probably another, I would say thirty businesses outside of the commercial district.
Okay.
At least that, that engaged with us for the cares money. You know, that we, I'll, I'll give you an example. There are many, many hair salons. Um, s- those sorts of smaller businesses that really didn't engage with us for cares funding. But I wonder if they would participate in something like this. But, you know, they would be more interested in something like this to reach out to their folks for some sort of a discount.
Right. I, I, well, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how this would work, eh, eh, you know, if, 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 if we approve forty-two thousand dollars. Or whatever we approve and, and you advertise it to the businesses, you know, that, that we will pay up to four hundred dollars. If, if there's huge participation in this program, that won't be near enough to, to pay for it. So I, 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 I mean, are you going to tell the businesses that, that we're going to cover what we can, given the money we have? Or are we going to give them a hard figure, four hundred dollars or, or whatever?
I would say it would be first come, first served. And, you know, if you, if you are, there are many businesses that. Don't do a lot of expensive promotions, so maybe this encourages them to do something a little bore, a little more. Um, aggressive, for lack of a better word. Um, I'm not sure that we're going to, that the doors will not be beaten down. We're just, we're just going to help the businesses that are big promoters, uh, that need to promote and can do, continue to promote. And um. I don't anticipate running out of money.
Okay, cause, because eh, from my perspective, you know, I, I would like to help the businesses most in need. And some businesses are actually doing pretty well in this thing, so, so figuring out how to make sure this money goes to. The people that most need it. I, I just worry. I, I worry a bit about how, how. I, I worry a bit about how, how we're making that determination. And if it's first come, first served, somebody who's, you know, very on the ball, may be doing a lot of, lot of mail order internet business already, but they could submit for that.
Well, I'll give you, I'll give you, for instance, there are a couple of restaurants that do a weekly newsletter. And they do that for practically no expense. I mean, it's basically a manager's time to put a mail to newsletter out. So this would be something to augment beyond that normal capacity, as Madam Alexander just said, that it would be like, you know, delivery. This would be something additional to what they, we have a lot of savvy business owners who have this down, you know. I'm actually going to take a little aside here. I'm actually really grateful to Mr. Hala to say that online sales have really gone through the roof. And we recognize that back in the fall and helped our businesses with online presence. We did a bunch of webinars and had a couple of grants to support that. So the businesses are savvy. I think I'm not quite sure how to express that. This is just to help their cash flow so that they do not dip into what little reserve they have remaining. I think that they would be very mindful as to say, okay, we can add an additional promotion or we'll just get reimbursed for something that we were planning to do.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And Rebecca, I would point out the request in our packet is for 60,000 in rough numbers. 150 businesses in Lexington at $400 up to 400 would be $56,000, 60,000 around number. So all businesses would be able to participate. And if they don't, the money is still there, could be returned, repurposed. We'd have discussions about that, but you know, this, this, I remind council that this is somewhat of a gratuitous circumstance for city council, because as the businesses do more business, our tax revenues go up. So they beneficial. And I, I think making this investment, if you look at it from that perspective and assisting the businesses, ones that are doing well and some that are struggling and treating them all equally in this form of up to $400 can make a whale of a lot of sense. If you, you don't agree with the dollar amount, that's one thing. If you don't agree with the concept, that's another, but I would frame it in that fashion. Mr. Smith, I think you were gonna try to get a word in a few minutes ago.
Rebecca, you know, you know, I'm on your side.
Of course I do.
I, I've said it before, I'll say it again. I love everything that Main Street's doing for the downtown business community, but I'm still, I haven't, I haven't been sold on, I wasn't sold last meeting and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sold on this concept. I'm waiting for some support from the business community for the proposal that you would bring to council. It sounds like this is what we want to do and we hope the downtown businesses can, will, will take advantage of it. I think strategically, getting some sort of consensus of programming that Main Street can do that's really going to have an impact downtown. Because what Jim just said in the economic forecast, we're in for a long haul of recovery. $400 I don't think is going to be a significant contribution to our downtown business community. And I've, I've lived it. It's, it's a, it's a nice gesture, but it, it doesn't have a lot of meat to it. I think getting together and finding some support through the downtown businesses is to find out how we can use city money to have the greatest impact on their success is, is what I'm, I'm looking for. I, I can't. I think we can do better.
I hear what you're saying. How long would that better program be in the future?
I, I would like to hear from the downtown business community. That's, that's who we're trying to help out the best way we can and the most efficient way we can, most effective way we can.
Yeah, this is, this is a small, this is a small gesture. I would agree with you, but it's something that we can do now. You know, and it's something that we could at least help them not go backwards with their expenses. Now you have to under, well, I shouldn't say it that way. Leslie was very kind to give a report as to two other events that we're doing. One of them is Restaurant Week. And that's happening at the end of February. And normally we ask businesses to contribute, the participating businesses to contribute to that program to cover advertising and printing expenses. And this year we are, Main Street is going to absorb those costs. So we have that going on. We also are looking at the, because that restaurant centric, we're also looking at another event that we're inventing as we go for mid-March for the shops. And that's the, some, some sort of shamrock, you know, thing like a Love Lex Lotto for mid-March. So I think what I'm saying is this is a small initiative. It's initiative, it's a small amount of money that just gets back into their pocket to help them promote themselves immediately. While we continue to create some events, I'm just afraid if we do nothing now, what does that look like? When does like, do we wait until April? You know, do we wait for somebody to come up with a more significant plan for three months from now? Is that going to be helpful?
Well, when I look at, and I'm trying to answer your question, when I look at the contribution city makes to the Main Street program total right now is what about $75,000?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. Okay. And, and we get, everybody gets huge mileage out of that. We're, it's, it's a, it's a success story.
Thank you.
And I, I have no qualms with, with that in our budget because it is so important and so impactful for the programming that Main Street does for our downtown business community. Now we're looking at something close to that amount. That you know, it just, it's, it doesn't have that same punch to it. And that's why I think if you get together, the downtown business community to, to know what their actual needs are, and if there's no consensus there, then maybe there's really nothing we can do that's going to have some impact. If you have a, a, a large group of businesses that say, this is what we really need and bring that to us, I would have a whole lot more less heartburn supporting it because that's the voice that I need to hear to support the programming that Main Street's trying to do.
You know, the, the challenge with that though, Chuck, is that there's not a one size fits all. We have a bunch of businesses. We have restaurants. We have a game shop, bookstores, shoe stores, you know, fitness center. I mean, we've got an awesome array of businesses on Main Street downtown. And then we have a lot of businesses that, that might fall into this category that are off Main Street that are not downtown, but, but that could, and, and what I, what intrigues me about this initiative is that in a way I think about this is $400 for a business and it taps into the entrepreneurial spirit of each business, which I don't understand what that might be for each business. And so an awesome store like Lex Running Shop, what they might be able to leverage their $400 into, they might be able to sell another 50 pairs of shoes because of it. They know who their customers are. They know how to expand their clientele with that $400. And, and up and down Main Street, the rest of the businesses might be thinking the same way. And, you know, it's not, it's $400 and I'm not going to assume that any of our businesses have that extra $400 laying around right now. Some do, we understand, but some businesses could really use this and they need to turn it into more sales. And so I'm intrigued by this. I had said all along that in the spring and March, we'd come back through with and, and do another infusion, if need be, of, of, of funding for businesses that are suffering, but rather than waiting to find out who they are in March, I think this is a unique way to, to let them do what they see is the best use of this money to drive sales to their store or, or people to downtown. So I'm intrigued by it and I'm willing to support this because I don't know what a better, I don't know what you will get, Chuck, that, that all the businesses would say, this is what will work for us when everyone's different.
I'm, I'm not trying to give a one size fits all, but if the downtown business community came back as a result of this meeting, and if we put it on hold, it's fine. If we, if we vote on it tonight, that's fine. If, if they voiced strongly to Rebecca and Main Street and said, yes, absolutely, that $400, we could make it work. That's, that's the support that I need to hear to approve this kind of funding, not, not Main Street's voice, not our voice, but the, but the business's voice. That's where the money's going. And if, if they're going to turn and say, 400 bucks, yeah, maybe, but, but if they're on board with this in, in a, in a, in a large fashion, I'm all for it. But that's, that's the compelling support I, I need to hear.
For years, there, there've been many business owners who have said, what is the city doing for us? We find ourselves in a pandemic and wanting to reach out and support and having some funds that we can possibly allocate. Also, Chuck, you've been involved with the downtown business longer than any of us and have more, more knowledge and experience. My limited experience has been businesses saying, I don't want Main Street telling us what we have to do and how we have to market ourselves. I want to do it myself. Give me the money. And neither one of those are wrong. And I would suggest with this circumstance, you know, if all the neighbors on Nelson Street, all the neighboring businesses said, we want to bond together and take our $400 and do a full page ad in the Rockbridge Advocate or the Richmond Times Dispatch or whatever, and bond together and do something, they have every right to do that. And it's putting it in, as David indicates, in the hands of the, the business owners as opposed to them Main Street Lexington saying, here's what, here's how you're going to do this. And I think the, the entrepreneurial spirit of the Scots Irish descendants are pretty strong in what they want to do. So I, I offer that is hopefully a compelling argument to support this initiative that I think you'll hear from businesses saying, thanks for giving us an opportunity at this point, but most of them have not even heard about this. We're trying to move reasonably quick to, to do something here during the, the dark cold days of February. And it's not perfect, but I don't think we should let perfection stand in the way of doing good.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm sorry.
Leslie, go right ahead.
I was just going to add that I, what I really liked about this proposal is that we're helping businesses help themselves. Like you, you and David have said, it, it's, you know, it's not one size fits all and they can figure out what works best for them. I think we do need to move quickly. We know that this is going to be probably the most difficult time is this winter period. And I think it's, I don't see how this could not help businesses. It's, it's available if they need it. With funding of $60,000, we could help up to 150 businesses, which sounds like doubtful that will get more than that who apply for the funds. So I appreciate the effort that went into this and I'm very curious and excited to see what businesses come up with new ideas. And, and I think any business promoting their business is going to create foot traffic that'll help everybody.
I agree with you. I, I, I think you're right. A, a promotion that gets folks into one store will have them crossing the street and buying a cup of coffee or having a meal in a, in another, in another store. And, you know, I, what's amazing is we can continue to have new businesses that are moving to Lexington and opening in downtown Lexington. And this is a small way to let them launch their marketing campaign to say who they are and where they are and how they, how they'll attract customers. And so February is going to be tough. One size is never going to fit all. And, and I would never bet against the awesome business owners in, in downtown Lexington. And I think they can do great things with this $400 if we make it available to them.
One thing I'd like for us to keep in mind is referring back to Jim's, you know, long-term recovery and how many times are we going to pass the hat around is I, I want to make sure we do it right. And, and that's why I'm asking these questions to make sure that the support from the downtown business community is really behind this program. If if the rest council is on board with this, I'm not going to fight it. But those are concerns that I think are important sharing, to share. You know, how many times do we go to the well?
I, I understand what you're saying and I appreciate your concerns. And I under, also understand that this might dilute something that city would, council would consider in the future. But the problem that at least I see that we would like to try and address is the immediate need. These, something, something should, we should help our businesses at the moment, you know, the if there's a program that ends up happening back down in May, is, does that help these businesses right now? You know, does, does this little bit of money help them not dip into their rent for the month of February, you know, for them to promote something? And, and I would also say that I would agree to poll the businesses and just say, I, I've actually heard from a few already that said, oh, heck, yeah, well, yeah, we'll, we'll do this. We, we have some, I, you know, we've already got some promotions in mind and we would love to have money to augment our expenses for those promotions. So I'm, I'm willing to promote, or excuse me, to poll the businesses in advance if that's something that you would like to see.
We discussed the possibility of low interest loans to the business. As opposed to a grant, what we're talking here is a grant. And this is in effect, the third time at the watering hole for the businesses there and could it work if we have low interest loans? So they could save money and just do the debt service.
I don't think we have enough funds set aside to do a meaningful loan program like that. And, you know, and again, when we were allocating the cares funds, like David mentioned before, we were expecting to do something like this at this point. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the Main Street Lexington Business Reimbursement Program with $60,000 in city funds.
I, I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just wanted to comment that, you know, this is probably the worst time of year because it's not only slowed down because of COVID, but also these are the winter months. So if we can help boost them a little bit to get past these winter months, perhaps they can have a better opportunity to, to survive once warm weather hits. And that's another month and a half, two months.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Yeah, I believe the I know that back in the fall, when there was discussion about ways that we could help downtown businesses, the restaurants in particular, perhaps close the streets and, and serve, have the restaurant serve in the streets. Sounded like a terrific idea. And there are other communities that did it. And I think with relative success, but when we pulled all the restaurant owners together and said, what do you think of this? They're like, please don't. Our pickup and carryout is very robust and we'd hate to lose that. The nice thing about this program The nice thing about this program is there are no strings attached, and we're not telling them other than use it for advertising. You know, promote yourself is what we want you to do. And the, Chuck, the concerns, I think the concerns that you have are very valid. And we'll know if they were real if nobody signs up. And, and then if nobody signs up, we still have the money, and we can look at other programming. But I, I think moving forward makes a lot of sense. But any other discussion before we have a roll call vote? Very well. Motion to approve by Ms. Strawn and seconded by Mr. Ayers. Mr. Smith? Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ayers?
Aye.
Alligator?
Aye.
Strong?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Great conversation and discussion. As usual, we don't have to agree on everything, but it's, you look at the Rubik's Cube from all directions to get the best possible outcome. So thank you all very much.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Rebecca, thank you. Good luck and have fun.
Thanks. We'll be in touch.
Perfect. Next item on the agenda is consideration of a letter to the Marshall Foundation. Ms. Strawn?
Sure. Yeah, as you know, the Marshall Foundation permanently closed the George C. Marshall Museum in Lexington at the beginning of this year. Unfortunately, the foundation will continue their outstanding work in research and education. However, with the closing of the Marshall Museum, Lexington is losing a tremendous historical, educational, and cultural treasure. General Marshall was a soldier, a statesman, a leader, and a Virginia Military Institute graduate. He served as Chief of Staff of the United States Army, Secretary of State, and Secretary of Defense. In addition to his military success, Marshall is primarily remembered as the architect of the Marshall Plan, which provided billions of dollars in economic and technical assistance to post-war Europe to restart the economies of the destroyed countries. He won the Nobel Peace Prize and a Congressional Gold Medal among many, many honors. President Harry Truman said of Marshall, "I don't think in this age in which I have lived that there has been a man who's been a greater administrator, a man with a knowledge of military affairs equal to General Marshall." "As a community that is dedicated to preparing the next generation of leaders, we need to continue to educate students, residents, and visitors about the life and principles of General George Marshall. Marshall is the type of leader that is relevant today. He was a nonpartisan leader who put country before party or state politics. He understood our role as a superpower and the need for cooperation among nations. And he designed an unprecedented international economic recovery plan. The Marshall Foundation's museum has been an asset to Lexington for over 50 years, and it is important to the city to continue that relationship with VMI's most famous alumnus. I'm asking the Lexington City Council to send a letter to the Board of the Marshall Foundation conveying our deep regret at the closing of the museum in Lexington with the expressed hope and endorsement that many of the artifacts regarding the legacy of George Marshall will be transferred to the VMI museum system. It is our hope that VMI will elevate their focus on alumnus General George C. Marshall Jr. and expand their museum offerings to educate first future generations about this esteemed leader. And if you want to know anything more about Marshall and about the collections, there's a great article in this month's Advocate. You can take a look at that as well.
I would entertain that as a motion.
I will second.
Thank you, Dennis. Any discussion from council?
Actually, Mayor, I do have one thing to mention. I do know that Kathy De Silve at the Marshall Museum has been in discussions with Colonel Gibson at the VMI museum. And I know that they are working together to find a way to bring some of that material over to the VMI museum. I, I know the VMI museum is, is competing with the World War II museum, the George C. Marshall International Center. But because, as Leslie pointed out, of, of Marshall's links to VMI, I, I'm optimistic that, that they will find a way to, to have a lot of that collection remain here.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing a roll call vote, Mr. Smith? Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Strong?
Aye.
Ayers?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Leslie, for bringing that forward and the support. Hope that that will be well received by the, the foundation. That's all I have on our agenda. Just want to express my appreciation to Eric and Karen and Rebecca for joining us this evening and enriching our meeting and our community with their good work. Crawford, good luck to you, and keep up the good work. Make your parents proud with good grades. And unless there's anything else to come before council this evening, you will stay adjourned. Good night, everyone.